Welcome to the City of West Miami, regular commission meeting. Today it's Wednesday, March 20th, 2019, and it is 7:45. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is the regular commission meeting. And for the invocation...
For the invocation, Chief, please.
Dear God in heaven, we give you thanks, praise, and honor for all the blessings you constantly bestow upon us. Thank you for your love, compassion, and mercy. We ask you to keep and protect our police officers, firefighters, and military personnel. Bring them home safely after their respective tours of duty. Help and bless our mayor and city commissioner in all their decisions. Enlighten them to always make the right choices for our fine city. We ask that you bring our country together and have all our elected officials work together for the betterment of our great nation. We ask that you comfort and bring peace to the family of those who have been killed in the past few weeks at the hands of terrorists. Be always with us, dear God, and never allow us to become separated from you. To all this, we say, amen.
Commissioner Blanes, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Item number three, roll call. Mayor Rondar Rodriguez...
Present.
Vice Mayor Luciano Suarez...
Yes.
Commissioner Candida Blanca...
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes...
Present.
Commissioner Eric Diaz-Padrón...
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, Madam Clerk, I would like to take an item out of order, and that would be Item A, under New Business.
Yes, Item 11, under New Business Agenda Items. Item 11A, Presentation of Key to the City to Former Mayor Eduardo H. Moinia by Mayor and City Commission.
Hi.
Hi.
Well, as you all know, many of you know why we're here. We are here for the man of the hour, to recognize not only the man of the hour, but the man of the last, what, 32 years?
Give or take.
Give or take 32 years, who looks extremely relaxed and happy and stress-free tonight. I'm loving it. I am loving the look. With that said, yes, it is with tremendous honor that we are here, Mr. Mayor, to present you with something very special this evening. But before we do that, we actually have, Mr. Q has presented a very special presentation for you. So, Mr. Q, please.
On January 30th, 1959, at a clinic named Los Chinos in the town of Placetas, in the Las Vegas Province of Cuba, Eduardo Hipolito Muñoz was murdered. However, it was in the city of Caballón, also in the Las Vegas Province, where he spent his childhood and adolescent years. Together with his youngest sister, Maritza, he managed to live a happy childhood despite the social, political pressures and issues surrounding the Cuban Revolution, which was just beginning. Thanks to the love and dedication of his mother, María Isabel González, and his father, Eduardo Fausto Muñez, the difficulties brought on by the revolution were made seemingly invisible to the young Muñez children. Nevertheless, this happiness was soon interrupted when his father was punished by the communist regime and sent away to a concentration camp called Casarrana, also in the Las Vegas Province. There, he was forced to work in the sugarcane fields, a method frequently used by the Cuban dictatorship to punish and humiliate those who opposed them and tried to flee their communist rule. Unfortunately, this was the same fate and hardship which thousands of Cubans were forced into while seeking freedom. This too was the fate of the Muñez family. Three years later, as soon as his father, Eduardo Senior, was set free, the family migrates to the United States via the well-known Freedom Flights. And on May 26th, 1971, the Muñez family arrived in Miami. The first few years in exile were quite difficult for the family. Overcoming the many difficulties which Eduardo endured, beginning with his studies in the eighth grade, faced with a new language, as well as the cultural and American India secrencies. Eduardo ultimately graduated from Miami Senior High School in 1976. From an early age, Eduardo knew that drawing and architecture were his greatest passion. His dreams began to come true when, in the same year he graduated from high school, Eduardo began taking various architectural courses at Miami-Dade Community College until 1979. His first job was a stocking clerk and shoe salesman in a small Cuban market in the Little Havana area of Miami called El Rodeo, on Southwest 8th Street between 5th and 6th Avenues. In 1980, Eduardo and his wife Miriam are married. In 1981, the newly-married couple moved to Texas, and that is where Eduardo completed his architectural degree, graduating with honors from the University of Houston in 1985. He returns to Miami in July of 1986, and that same year, he purchases a home in West Miami, where he moves with his wife Miriam and two small daughters, Cindy and Christine. It is in this same home where he lives to this day. The safety of living in West Miami gave Eduardo the opportunity to offer the same sense of happiness and well-being that his parents gave him in their native Caballón. Upon his return to South Florida, he began his architectural career, and in 1998, he formed his own firm. The beginning of his political career was more of a casual event, coupled with the need to overcome his fear of public speaking. For Eduardo, the task of speaking before any sizable group was not an ability, but a nightmare. Coincidentally, one of his neighbors, architect Carlos Ruiz de Cavedo, who was at the time the chairman of the West Miami Planning and Zoning Board, mentioned to Eduardo of an upcoming vacancy due to Carlos's inability to continue serving as the chairman of the aforementioned board. Finally, Eduardo Muñez decides to join the Planning and Zoning Board in his quest to overcome his fear of public speaking. Additionally, he wanted to promote a new ordinance which would allow residents to have two-story homes in West Miami. He became a board member in 1987 and served in that capacity for 14 continuous years, which included becoming the chairman of said board. The fact that Eduardo Muñez joined the Planning and Zoning Board was very important for West Miami, whereas Eduardo contributed greatly in the zoning changes which allowed the improved development of the residential and commercial areas of West Miami. In 2002, Eduardo moves on to become a city commissioner in West Miami, and in December of 2009, he is elected as the city's mayor, a position he held until his retirement on February 28th, 2019. As the city's mayor, Eduardo Muñez was of vital importance to the city. In 2009, the city underwent a grave crisis which brought the city to the brink of bankruptcy. With this looming fiscal problem and a fractured commission, Mayor Muñez was able to bring the commission together, gain the support of both the citizens and the city administration. Eduardo is able to overcome this dilemma, and West Miami rises once again to become a prospering city and one of the safest in the nation.
Mayor, congratulations. Today is your day. On behalf of staff and all city employees, I wish to thank you for your dedicated service over the years to the city of West Miami. It has been a pleasure to serve as your city manager all these years, under your leadership. Thank you for raising the bar. Thank you for setting an example and for serving your community with honesty and dignity. I wish you all the very best in your future endeavors.
Mr. Mayor, I am so honored to sit here today and be a part of this recorded memory that will be presented to you. You gave this city such a great part of your life. You led us with honesty, integrity, and passion. And you, sir, set a shining example for the current and future commission to follow. For that, I thank you.
Mayor Eduardo Muñez, what a special day today. But we all come here to thank you for so many years of service to the city of West Miami. First, as the city commissioner, then as the mayor of the city. But before that, as part of the Sonning Board, you were able to bring your expertise and to share with all others to make a better West Miami every day. I know that you have a lot of plans for your future, and we wish you the best. But before that, we need to say thank you, because you have been an honest, hard-working person that were always there to listen to others. We are proud of you, and we are proud of so many years of service. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of the residents of Miami-Dade County that I represent.
Mayor Eduardo Muñez's passion and commitment toward the community will be an inspiration and example for generations to come. The entire West Miami community, the commissioners, employees, and city administration join forces to offer our sincere gratitude for the untiring work during the many years of service to this community. Today, we can state unequivocally that the sacrifices and efforts of his parents, Eduardo Fausto and María Isabel, despite the doubly painful exile, gave their Caballón son to the city of West Miami.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, it is my distinct pleasure and honor to read this list or to share with everyone here all your accomplishments in the time that you have served our wonderful city of West Miami. Mayor Eduardo Muñez served on the city's Planning and Zoning Board from 1986 to 2002. Since then, he was appointed to the City of West Miami Commission in 2002, where he served in various capacities, city commissioner, vice mayor, and mayor since continuously 2009. He inherited a city left with $50,000 in reserves, and along with the city administration, worked to increase it by over $500,000 in its general funds. Good job, Mr. Mayor. He championed grants that led to the acquisition of land to expand the Garden Club Park, currently in the final stage of completion. Our mayor never voted to increase the millage rates. When he became mayor, there, since he became mayor, there has been no increase in garbage fees, water, or sewer rates. He worked diligently to promote second-story homes in the city. Today, we have several two-story homes which have added to the quality of life and increased property values. Tremendous responsiveness during hurricanes, supportive of senior programs and youth programs. He championed the first-ever arts festival in the city of West Miami, along with the celebration for our 70th anniversary of the city. He also championed the building department for the benefit of the community and worked with our District 6 Commissioner Rebecca Sosa, now Vice Chairwoman, so that the citizens and business owners would have all their services close to their properties. Mayor Muñez also worked with the city commission to embrace zoning changes that ultimately led to the redevelopment of the city's commercial corridors, while protecting and preserving the residential character of our city. He represented the city at the Miami-Dade County League of Cities on the Board of Directors, and as such, was nominated to serve on the County Board of Rules and Appeals. He promoted traffic circles to mitigate speeding in our residential areas, most of them built with grant dollars at no cost to the taxpayer. Mayor Muñez worked to unify our commission for the greater good of our city. He promoted countless resolutions in support of partnerships and worked with local and state representatives, senators, during session to ensure funding for the city's services. A very long list of accomplishments, sir. At this time, it is our distinct pleasure to call you up here to present you with something very special from all of us, from our hearts to you, sir.
The key. The key. Open the door.
This is what we're all here for, people. To present to this extraordinary man a very small token of our appreciation for the tremendous work you do as our mayor, commissioner, vice mayor, and on all boards. Presented to Eduardo H. Muñez, man of the city of West Miami, 2009 to 2019, in recognition of your three decades of dedicated public service to the city of West Miami. On the Planning and Zoning Board, City Commission, and Day, from the Mayor and City Commission, dated this 20th day in March 2019, the key to the city of West Miami, and Mayor Gavil, Eduardo H. Muñez, man of the county.
No, I'll speak from here. I want to help, yeah, one, two, three. There's so many people I want to thank. So many people, and I don't want to make anything. I could tell you that I haven't done it all. There are people that have been really instrumental in my life, obviously. My wife, my kids, my two sons-in-law, all the people that I've shared here at City Attorney, my manager, et cetera, et cetera. But the same way that I was pushed, actually, I have fears speaking in public. When my next-door neighbor talked to me about, you know, kind of, hey, why didn't you join the Planning and Zoning Board? I said, why don't you speak in public? And he said, yeah, absolutely. And I promised myself that I was going to come to that. So that was a step in stone towards the Planning and Zoning Board. And we accomplished that. And when they mentioned the second story, I remember presenting the second story to Mayor Sosa, former city commissioner, now Senator Marco Rubio. Dear Carlos, mi amor... Mi amor, I'm a little nervous, brother. Former mayor.
No, 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 I'm saying they voted against it.
Actually, mi amor sat with me in the Planning and Zoning Board, and then when he became a commissioner, he gave me a hard time. But nevertheless, nevertheless, so, so many years before I started in the commission, there's a couple of people that I did not, that were instrumental. And that's you, Mr. Carlos, and of course, our commission, Rebecca Sosa. She was very, very smart, you see. She started talking to me about politics, and I didn't care about politics. But she was, she was... A lot of people don't remember this, but West Miami used to flood. As a matter of fact, I had people that actually got sick entirely and moved out of the city. But Commissioner Rebecca Sosa was instrumental in Tallahassee, and, you know, brought money, so we could design, furthermore, including installation of what today you don't have to worry about. It rains in about an hour, the water's gone. But she told me something, she said, you should, you should be, you know, we need somebody like you in the commission. And I go, but I don't know anything about politics. She said, yeah, but listen, who's going to tell the people about the Invert of a Pipe? Which is a term, you know, that even is used. And I said, okay, all right, I got you there. And that's how I started in politics. Of course, my first meeting, it was nothing about the Invert of a Pipe or anything. It was about the Irish Sea, and I almost quit. Then I go away. Then, going back with the commission, when, when, we had a, we had a strange commission. And he, we had a really strange commission, and I remember...
That's a good way of putting it.
And Sosa came up to me and said, what are you doing? You're wasting your time. And I said, Elliot, wait and see. I will, I'm going to make the difference. And we united the commission. Back then, the only two people on my side were Commissioner Blanes and Luciano Suarez. And then all the other commissions came along, and now we have a united commission that have all worked for the city of West Miami, that family says. Anyway, so, sorry about the wrong speech. Thank you very much. I wasn't going to say anything, but I was really touched with that video. Keep talking, keep talking.
They started off by saying you were shy about talking, now you can't get it.
But anyway, thank you very much, and my, 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 uh...
There's more, sir.
There's more?
There's one, yes, yes.
Okay.
If you'd like to take your seat, we'll put pictures out. There is more, come on.
Sit down.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this time I'd like to call our Miami-Dade County District 6 Vice Chairwoman Rebecca Sosa has brought something for you as well this evening. Vice Chairwoman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. I would like to ask former Mayor Diaz-Padrón, who represents me very well in different boards in Miami-Dade County, to please join me in this presentation. You know, there are some times in life that you make decisions, and then you question after, did I do the right thing? And that is a question that we have asked ourselves when we were able to convince you to be part of the city commission for the city of West Miami. And the answer to that question is absolutely yes. You have represented the city with honesty, with honor, and we have been very proud of what you have done. And like I said in the video, you learn about those Invert pipes and... And you know the day that I told Mr. Penna, Mr. Penna, get out of that hole over there. I need to go in there to see where the water, the, the over flap, and the flap is not closing, and it's not...
And the water table?
He told me, where are you going? And I said, I'm going to go down there to see the water table. And he told me, try. And he thought I wasn't going to do it, and then the manager told me, are you crazy? And I said, wait and see. And we learned so much. This city have come through many moments. I remember the time when you were mayor. You faced the problem with the garbage fee and the sewers. The sewer fees. And then, the city's declaration of bankruptcy. And I remember, at that time, I have to say this, non-political, we fire everyone. And then, at the end of the day, I remember walking with Ms. Aguilar, who we appointed manager in Tallahassee, finding, funding, funding. We went to see the governor. I remember I told him, give me two years. If in two years we don't bring the city back to financial stability, I will resign, and you will appoint the proper board. He gave us the opportunity to do that, and it was done in unity, working very hard. And then, you kept, and this commission kept, that moment that we never went back to that financial problem that the city had. And we were able to save the city, the police department sacrificed itself for two years. Everyone cooperated with that. And that's how the city of West Miami became strong, when we learned from each other. And you have done an incredible job. And that's why I want to ask you to join us. Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, you want to say something before?
No, no, I think you said, I mean, he just didn't know that when we talked to him those days in the sidewalk, it was not last so long.
Remember. Remember.
He thought it was going to be like a year.
But we were able to convince him easily, you know.
It was a long walk, but he thought it was going to be like a year or something, he didn't know.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask your family to join you on this presentation, if you can, please, in the front.
We would like to present the keys to the calendar. The honor of Eduardo Muñia. In recognition of your public service as a mayor and commission of the city of West Miami from the year 2002 to the year 2019. And I hope that you keep this in your heart.
Beautiful.
It doesn't open any house or anything. But at least it shows, it shows our love for you and our appreciation for your years of dedication. And let's, I know that we learn from teens, the legacy of respect above a million. Democracy, when you have a difference of opinion, it's healthy because that's democracy. But we have to think that we don't represent ourself, but we represent the residents that give us the opportunity to represent them. Mr. Mayor, good luck in the future. Just Godspeed to you.
Thank you.
Uh, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners?
You should come up here with me.
There is a. There's an ordinance attached to this?
Now you know what the muckra.
Mayor, mayor, let me see it. Preciosa.
What did you say, like a young rapper?
Thank you for that very nice compliment.
That's so nice.
Yeah, let's take a break.
Okay, so before, before we break, I'd like to welcome anyone, um, if anyone would ha- has a few words they'd like to say, the commission, any, any words would like to be spoken? And, and obviously, from the public as well. Any words to be spoken from commission?
Yes, I, I do like to say something very brief with him.
Mr. Penna microphone, I mean, Mr. Penna, Mr. Blanes microphone.
Mr. Mayor, I thank you for serving. As a commissioner, as a resident of the city of West Miami, I thank you so much for all your years of service. Thank you for putting up with me in very difficult times. And keeping me in line. And, um, it's been an honor to serve with you. I will try to emulate your, your integrity and, and the honor and the impeccability that you have sustained through the meetings. And through the many years of, of meetings and, and discussions and so on and so forth. I will try to emulate you. And I thank you. And you know where I am, I'm a phone call away. You ever leave me, you got me.
As are you. Anyone else? Commission, anyone else?
Yeah, I want to say something.
Yes, please, Commissioner Suarez. Welcome back, welcome, welcome back, welcome back.
Mr. Penna, Mr. Penna, you called Mr. Sosa, Mr. Muñia.
Mr. Su- Commissioner Suarez, you have, you have the floor, sir.
Mayor Muñia, I heard you spend here thirty-four or forty-four or fifty-four, yeah, I don't know, I forgot that. But I'm going to tell you something, you are going to make more money in, in now than before. Because this table give you, take you time, but don't give you any money. So, I hope you make a great career and very successful years, years to come. And Miriam will be very happy, all the family will be very happy too. So, I wish, I wish and I think all of us wish the best for you.
Yes.
We do.
Yes.
Anyone else up here? Anyone from the, yes, please.
Short. I told you before, I mean, no, I never behave with that. I try, I struggle. I kind of, I try, I struggle. Mayor?
Name and address for the record.
Elliot Asbell, 15345 Southwest 77 Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida 33157. Also involved somewhat with the Sunnyside Motel.
Somewhat.
In, 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 in West. Eddie, uh, two quick statements. One, a pleasure. And I don't like to admit it, but you were right. Give you time, and I was one thousand percent wrong. Oh my God, that's being recorded. Don't, no, my God, my God, my image. And then a very, very sincere apology. You tried and tried harder than most, uh, but I'm just impossible to be controlled. And I wanted to show the respect and whatever, you know, sometimes, you know, you know. But I one thousand percent apologize. God bless you and your family, be well, enjoy, be healthy. Love you. Adios. No.
Would anyone else like to say a few words? All right, so with that said, we will now take a break, uh, for refreshments and, and to wish our mayor extremely well. Let's take a break. Go back to order. Mr. Q, first order of business. You did a phenomenal, outstanding, tremendous job on that video. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Q, at least come out and wave to us. Mr. Q?
He's sleeping.
Knock on the door.
The guy is amazing, he really is.
Mr. Q, gracias, Mr. Q.
Great job.
Okay, Madam Clerk, shall we go back to the order of the agenda, please?
Madam Manager, any recommendation or?
Follow the order of the agenda.
Okay, let's follow the original order of the agenda with item four, presentation of minutes for approval for February twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, regular city commission meeting.
Second.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Presentation of minutes for approval for March first, two thousand and nineteen, special commission meeting.
Second.
Major, motion?
Motion by Commissioner Blanca. Second by Vice Mayor Suarez. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Presentation of minutes for approval for March fourth, two thousand and nineteen, special commission meeting induction ceremony.
Motion?
Second.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, item five, report of the city manager.
Thank you, Miss, Madam Mayor and members of the city commission. My report for this evening is written, it's attached to the packet. Thank you, Miss First Item Mayor. A request that I bring to your attention, uh, for approval. The, uh, West Miami Middle School, which happens to be a feeder school for those kids that are finished their education at, um, elementary education at Silvania. Most of the West Miami kids that attend Silvania wind up in West Miami Middle School. The, um, the school approached Mayor Rodriguez, and, uh, they're, they were looking for a venue. And, uh, they, they happened to come across the Rebecca Sosa multi-purpose facility, which they would love to have an award ceremony and an art exhibit. The school is promoting, uh, or inspiring students to enter in the field of, of film and its related, uh, career path. And so what we're asking you to, uh, allow us permission to waive the actual rental fee to the school so that they can have their ceremony and their, um, art exhibit there. On, um, April, I want to say the event is, uh, April twenty-seventh. There's an email attached, um, to the, to the report, and, um, they are willing to pay, they have a budget to pay for the cleanup fee. There's no need for police officers because they don't expect that many, uh, a large group. But they do need a venue, and they really fell in love with the center, and it's exactly what they need for the presentation. So, if you approve it, we will, uh, be happy, Madam Mayor and I will be happy to get in touch with the school and, um, and help them with their plans to, to bring the activity to, to the city of West Miami.
If I may, if I may add to that, um, I met the, the teacher that, um, emailed our city manager. I was invited to FIU a while back to do the unveiling of their, um, art, what is, I'm sorry, Film Festival poster. And it was a very, very nice event, all, obviously all ran by the children, and, and there were some tremendous artists there. And, um, this is going to supposedly be a very, um, uh, they have a lot of, um, very important people coming, they have some television personalities as MCs.
Yes.
They, um, so there'll be, you know, a lot of people there to see our venue, and hopefully, well, the more people they see it, the more people might want to rent it, I'm saying. So, I'd like to, I mean, um, I would very much like to showcase our city, um, through that type of event. You know, people that are in the arts, that way, um, you know, more business hopefully. But anyway, um, the manager is giving you all the details, so I'll let her continue.
So, that's pretty much it, and, and again, I think that if, if we pay it forward in, in terms of allowing them to, to host their award ceremony, I'm sure that it's going to bring new business to the city of West Miami by, by way of venue rental. And it's a way of collaborating with a feeder school. Um, and I spoke to the teacher as well, and they do have children from West Miami who attend that school. But, uh, I didn't want to do this without your authorization.
We have all the bases covered?
We're covered. The venue is available for that day in question and.
Safety, uh, our police.
They'll fill out the rent, the rental form, I mean, they will be filling out the rental form.
Yes, they will complete all the paperwork. They really do not expect, uh, they, they have a number anywhere from seventy to ninety total attendance. It's a school, it's a school project, so they're not going to be bringing kids from outside the school, it's a family event. No alcohol will be served, and so, and I don't, I don't see the harm in it, I, I, I see it as a positive, I really do. You will be invited, um, the, the teacher advised that they're going to extend an invitation to the mayor and the city commission to attend, to get to know a little bit more about what they're doing at the school to promote the film and arts, uh, career path for the, for the future of those kids.
Motion.
Second. Are all in favor for, to authorize the city manager to make a reference?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will follow up with the school tomorrow. The next item is a, uh, a grant program that Mr. Penna started during his time as acting city manager. We were recently notified that the city was awarded an amount of twenty thousand dollars for the Neat Streets, um, shaded walk-to-school project as described by Mr. Penna, um, in the application. We have to actually complete now the paperwork, but, uh, we will accept. This, uh, grant has a match from the city, uh, ten thousand dollars from park impact fees, and another ten thousand that was included in the budget, um, for the, as the required match to the grant. So we have a total project for tree planting of forty thousand dollars. And it is mainly concentrated on Sixteenth Street in the path for, for the school. And Cooper Park, correct. So, what we could do is schedule some type of ribbon-cutting ceremony or tree ribbon ceremony, uh, where we can showcase what we're doing in terms of planting trees. And keeping up with the designation of the city of West Miami as part of the Tree City USA program. The next item in my report is the Easter Egg Hunt. If you have come by the city recently, you've seen all the boxes that are arriving, and I'm sorry, we're using the conference room for that. Uh, we're preparing for the upcoming Easter Egg Hunt. Mr. Quintana is going to start working now on the promotional, uh, material to send out to the residents. And again, each year, we want to make it better and better. Carri's doing, uh, an excellent job in, in preparing, we want to get some additional bicycles for the raffles. The kids really love the, the egg hunt itself, and then they really stay around for the raffle. So, um, if you have any other ideas that you would like, and again, this is a project that Commissioner, uh, Blanes started a long time ago. And each year, we learn for how we can get better. We're working with you, Madam Mayor, to make it safer for the kids and the parents when they all rush out to the field. So, it should be a nice event, weather permitting. And the last, uh, item in my report is, um, in the possible absence of a, a commission meeting early April, since I saw it on the agenda. I'd like to request, uh, your permission to close city hall on Friday, April nineteenth, in observance of Good Friday.
You did a motion, motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much, that concludes my report.
Next item, Madam Clerk?
Next item, item six, report of the city attorney.
Uh, this morning, we have an excellent and very productive meeting with Commissioner Blanes, uh, Mr. Penna, myself, and, um, uh, the manager. In reference to court enforcement, I think that it was just, uh, a very productive, uh, exchange of ideas. I think that there's a lot to be accomplished. I'm working on a, as a matter of fact, I finished an administrative order, uh, that I submitted to the manager. And the, uh, subject matter of the water connection, uh, to be signed only by the owner, pursuant of case law, and also, uh, an ordinance that we already passed from time back. We're working on the signed ordinance, uh, reamping. Also, uh, we had a, uh, already drafted, uh, by the leave of, and request by the mayor of the vacant, uh, property ordinance, which I will meet with the mayor to discuss it. And also, uh, certain applications that need to be done, and affidavits that are already completed.
Very good.
In addition, there's other projects, but there, there are time limitations, so, um, that will be the end for today.
Very good. Next item?
Item seven, report of the city engineer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, commission. You should have in your packet a memorandum regarding ongoing projects. As you know, from time to time, as projects ramp up, we like to kind of put together a little package, uh, to inform you all of the ongoing projects, not only ongoing projects, but completed projects and things we have in the pipeline. So, we do have quite a bit of stuff going on, so I wanted to brief you all, uh, on these projects. Not going to go into too much detail, just kind of go a summary over of, of what we have. Uh, the memorandum goes definitely into some more detail there. Uh, first and foremost, just want to talk a little bit about the building department. Kind of like to give you a status, so far this year, we've issued about sixty building, uh, master permits, uh, in the first two and a half months, which is pretty typical for what we've been doing over the past few years. This kind of shows us that, you know, construction is not slowing down, we're, we're kind of going at the same pace that we have over the last, uh, three or four years, which is approximately three hundred permits a year, uh, for the whole city. So, that's, you know, that's good news, things are still. Things are still happening. People are remodeling, a lot of remodels, a lot of, uh, impact windows, re-roofing, additions. Uh, so that's kind of what we're seeing a lot of. In addition, on the big projects, uh, they get a status from Estates earlier today on, on the two projects, uh, the two major projects, and we're looking at, uh, close to the end of the year to have, uh, Alameda complete and in the next few months capping off twenty seconds. So that's, that's good news. We'll have those projects done and by the end of the year and, and, uh, back to normal, particularly over here on H Street. Um, one other item with the building department, Juan and I were, were speaking over the last couple of days regarding the, uh, the fee schedules. Uh, we did have a discussion last year regarding, uh, looking at the fee schedule that we currently have. We've been using essentially the Miami-Dade County fee schedule since the inception of the building department. We piggybacked off, off their fee schedule just to keep it simple for the residents. But as time has gone on and, and we've kind of, you know, honed in on the type of permits we do and, and the type of work we do here at the building department, um, we kind of realized that, that, that fee schedule is not really in line with what, what, how we operate. So last year, we, we did look at some other cities and did, did a comparative analysis and came up with some recommendations. So, so Juan and I and, and the city, and the city manager will be getting together to, uh, kind of come up with our recommendations for what to do with the, with the fee schedule.
Uh, let me interrupt a minute.
Sure.
We had passed sometime back, uh, adopting the fee schedule of Miami-Dade County.
Correct.
So if there's any recommendation, that would be welcome to it.
Yeah.
When can we expect that, Frankie, more or less, that you had presented to us?
Well, I mean, it could be, it could be pretty soon.
Just an idea.
Yeah. I mean, within the next month or two.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Fine, okay.
Yeah. I think in terms of the building department, that's about it. Um, let's move on to some of the projects. Uh, first project out of the gate is the City Hall Passport Office Expansion and the bathroom remodeling. Um, we, uh, we've recently put, uh, had the pre-bid meeting. Uh, we had quite a bit of interest, I think about eleven contractors showed up, so that was, that was, that was good to see. Um, we have bids due on April fifteenth. And from there, we anticipate a project start sometime in the middle of summer, hopefully around July.
July.
Uh, we're completing, uh, by the end of the year, January timeframe, if, uh, ball goes well. Project budget there is about a hundred fifty thousand dollars from impact fees. So, let's see. Other project in the pipeline, uh, the next, the next project up will be this, uh, the next phase of citywide drainage improvements. We have two particular locations where we're gonna be doing drainage improvement. Southwest Thirteenth Street, just west of Sixty-Fifth Avenue and the, uh, intersection of Twelfth Street and Fifty-seventh Avenue. Uh, we're currently under design on that. We expect to be finished, uh, in June and go to advertisement then. And they'll begin construction hopefully by the end of summer, early, you know, early fall. The two exciting projects, the Police Department and the Rec Center. We get, you'll get your, your two by four hopefully soon. Um, we're working on the design criteria package for both of those projects. Basically, we're gonna prepare a, a design criteria package, which is, as I've, uh, explained before, kind of a conceptual level design to about thirty percent. We put together the, the RDBS, which is the, the RFQ essentially for a design builder, put it out to bid. Uh, they take it to final design and construction. Uh, same, same procurement method that we used for the, the Public Works Facility, which was extremely successful. Uh, so some, some dates there. We, we expect to have that package complete by early summer. And, uh, we expect the, uh, construction start early 2020. It'll take some time to finalize design, go to, go to permits and all that. So early 2020, we should, uh, finally get going. Another thing I wanted to mention here, the next item there on the memo is the water and sewer and NPDS regulatory compliance activities. This is something a city engineer that we, we've, we've been doing for years. I, I wanted to just make note of it, uh, 'cause as, in, in recent years, it's just gotten more and more intense, these, these, uh, these, uh, compliance, uh, items that we need to adhere to. Uh, in particular, this, this year, uh, we, we had to basically create a GIS atlas for the water and sewer system of, of, of the city, uh, which was quite a task, 'cause we were taking all the ASBILs and all the drawings. They were all in paper and we had to digitize them into a, a, a GIS system, which is the standard now for, for most agencies. So we did that, uh, that was submitted to the county last month. And not only is it part of our compliance, but it's actually a great tool for the city, 'cause now we have the whole system digitized. So when, as developers come in or as new projects come online, we have all our records digitized that we can easily go and access instead of having to dig through papers and, and go into Juan's office and to his files and find this stuff. So it's a, it's actually a great tool for the city that, that, uh, we had to do it, but it also benefits us tremendously. So moving on, on some, some projects we recently completed, Garden Club Expansion. That's just about done, I think, right? The bathroom's in. Not in yet, okay. And, uh, and the ADA improvements and electric improvements over at Cooper Park. So all this stuff, uh, we've recently completed. And then upcoming projects, as obviously the potable water is the, the big thing. Uh, and I did not mention it here, but the, the traffic study as well. We're finalizing, uh, the agreements with the county for the grants, uh, to be able to move forward with the, the traffic, citywide traffic study. Uh, that's, that's about it. Any questions?
Very good. Sounds very, very good.
Everything okay for me?
All right. Thank you.
Next item, Madam Clerk?
Item eight, committee reports. Report the mayor.
Any committee reports? I do have a report. I am very happy to say that we had a very productive trip to Tallahassee. Hoping it was successful. We'll know how successful we were come, I believe it was end of April. We went during the first week of the legislative session, which was the most effective time to go. And we met with our senators, our, our house reps. We met with some, um, committee chairmen and women. And the reason we were there was to try to secure money from Tallahassee for our potable water pipes, which are in dire need of, of repair, I'm sorry, replacement, not repair. So that was, that was the main reason for the trip. So again, it was very productive and I'm hoping it will turn out to be very successful. I have a good feeling. We, we got, um, good feedback from everyone we spoke to, so we'll see. Fingers crossed, we will be able to bring some money back to the city so Mr. Penna can, can start replacing those, um...
Service lines.
Service, those service lines, those potable water service lines that we need done. Um, I also am very happy to say that, uh, we've had two career days. We had the career day here, um, where the school came, where we gave them a tour of our facility and then they came for their mock commission. So thank you to all staff that helped with that. It was very successful. The children were once again extremely happy and, um, hopefully we provided them with some, some very good memories of that day. And then I went to the Biltmore School and spoke as part of their career day just this past week and I had a wonderful time. I, I love their questions. They come up with the best questions. So I had a very good time there as part of career day. And Gina was very, very grateful that I, that I was here. So that's it as far as my reports. Um, Madam Clerk?
Any other committee?
Nothing else?
That concludes that item. Item nine, citizens' presentations. No presentations, Madam Mayor? Under, uh, item ten, interim finished business. Item ten A, follow-up FEMA, Hurricane Irma reimbursement, Office of the City Manager.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor and commission members. I think we're getting closer, uh, which is a good sign. We've had some setbacks and that's, uh, we lose, uh, anytime we establish a, a rapport with a project manager at FEMA, we lose them. Now we have a new representative who's coming on Monday to meet with us. And, uh, we have to sort of like give them the same documentation. It's, it's a repetition of what we've been doing for the last eighteen months. This is probably number ten. Benji, something.
Number ten, project director?
Yeah, project manager for FEMA. They drop like flies.
What are you all doing to these people?
It's incredible. But these are, these are representatives, they're, I don't think they're full-time employees. What they do is they're contracted to take care of natural disasters and then they're mobilized to different areas as needed.
Wow.
So that being said, we got a, a, a late afternoon, um, project update for the, the projects that are the largest sums of money, which are contemplated under a category known as category A, which is for the debris removal. I see that they started, uh, we, we have confirmation that they started obligating, which means it's in the pipeline for funding the first category A project for an amount of federally funded sixty thousand dollars and twenty thousand dollars that are, is gonna be state-funded. Um, that will cover the bills of what the city paid to Miami-Dade County, solid waste, some of the overtime, some of the activities that occurred during Hurricane Irma for what they call debris, the debris component of, of the storm. So it looks like they're starting to move along. Um, we don't agree. We have one project under appeal. Mr. Penna and I have been working jointly on this with Mrs. Leon. We have appealed the decision on several of their projects. I think we're not gonna make money here. Uh, on the contrary, I think we're gonna be able, after it's all said and done, to pay off the credit line. There is a twelve and a half percent of the total amount of the storm project that we are responsible for. That's why it's so important to keep our, our, our focus on that emergency appropriation that the city must have in its budget or a, build up a reserve, because you never know when the next hurricane will hit. So I agree, Madam Mayor, and I know that that was an area that, that you expressed emphatically, that the city had to do something to set aside some emergency reserves for hurricane. I mean, we're, we're seeing it now as these projects, uh, become obligated. But I'm very hopeful that things are going to move along. On Monday, I'm going to be meeting with the bank. Our loan, our credit line extension matures on the thirtieth of March. We may have to extend that, um, credit line in an overabundance of caution. As our city attorney, who's very wise, always counsels us, I think that we should, um, renew the credit line for another year. And if we get the money soon, we just pay it in full, because we're only paying interest on the unpaid portion of the loan. So all monies being obligated by FEMA coming back to the city will be paid into the loan directly. That will reduce the amount of interest payments that we're making on a monthly basis and hopefully we'll be able to pay off that credit line soon. But I think that to be safe, if you all think it's correct, we will proceed to, uh, renew the credit line for another year. If we pay it down, then we owe them nothing.
Let's be sure there's no prepayment penalty on there, correct?
There isn't.
Okay, good.
There isn't. We checked. So I saw Teresa here, uh, from City National tonight and we'll be meeting on Monday with a loan officer that, um, with Odalis Peña. And, um, obviously, um, Mr. Penna and I and Mercedes will continue to work on the, on the FEMA process diligently. This is a good couple of hours every day of our time.
Well, it sounds like it's not a matter of choice, it's something we have to do.
Well, we have no choice.
We don't, we haven't got the FEMA money yet, so we have to...
So I will be meeting, once I, I understand what the conditions are for the renewal of the loan, we will meet with our city attorney, because obviously his time has to, uh, his participation is, is needed to be able to close this loan. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for our city manager from the commission?
No, this is obvious.
Right.
You have to extend the line. This is obvious. Or, most of the citizens, they, they can't, they are doing the same thing. Because FEMA has delayed the payments, so what you have to do, extend the credit line.
Very good. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, next item is item eleven B. This is a second reading, a public hearing. An ordinance of the city of West Miami amending the code ordinances of the city of West Miami by amending chapter five, article five, entitled Excavations, five seventy-one through five eighty-one of the city code. Creating new chapter five A, article one, section one point zero, entitled Communication Facilities in Public Rights of Way. Sections one point zero through five point zero as provided, uh, hearing. Creating the West Miami Communications Rights of Way Ordinance. Providing intent and purpose, applicability and authority to implement. Providing definitions, providing for registration for placing or maintaining communications facilities in the public rights of way. Providing requirement of a permit, providing application requirements and review procedures. Providing for a performance bond, providing for construction methods, providing for development and objective design standards. Providing for fees and taxes, providing enforcement remedies, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflict and providing an effective date. Mayor and City Commission, this is phase three. This item was advertised on March seventh of two thousand and nineteen. This is a public hearing also.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners.
Mr. Penna, please, a refresher.
Uh, our ordinance originally was from nineteen eighty-five. Since then, there's a lot of, uh, uh, new regulation that has gone into effect as far as digging out in the public rightways. And in order to keep up with the times, we needed to revamp our ordinance, our ordinance completely. So with the help of Mr. Yellow's office, we looked at several cities that had different types of ordinances regarding regulation of, um, excavation, uh, placement of utilities out in the rightway and other, uh, communication devices. And we adopted ours, mimicking, I believe it was the city of Tallahassee that we mimicked. And, uh, the, the ordinance is very strong. It needs to be implemented. Uh, there's a new, uh, uh, bill that was passed by the state, uh, regarding co-location on utility poles, which is going to play a very important role into this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Penna.
I have a question.
Yes?
Well, I have to understand, this is coming from the, from Tallahassee, right? That order, there that, the communications institute have the tower, they are going to use the utility poles to connect those small items to, like, repeat the, the signal.
Correct.
What about, if it isn't in the utility poles, what are we talking about excavation? What we have to do if...
Well, because...
They are going to use the, the, the utility poles, they actually are.
Correct. But as, as placing their equipment on the utility pole, they still have to provide, uh, uh, current to that equipment. So they do need to excavate the parkways to bring power source.
So the connections, the excavation will be the electrical connection.
That's correct.
Well, this is something that practically the state is forcing the cities to do this, right?
They allow, uh, communication companies to share the poles, uh...
They allow the communication to do that.
To share poles, yes.
And we have to make the, the ordinance in, in order to, the communication company proceed with the, with the work.
Proceed with the work and regulate their work.
Yeah. All right, is that why I make a motion?
Second.
Madam Mayor, this is a public hearing.
Any, any?
Yeah, all right, too.
Go ahead, sir.
The, our neighbors to the east in Core Gables, east, right? Our neighbors to the east, have they, have they, um, have they passed any sort of regulations yet on the, the tenants on the, what are they, coaxles, what are they called?
Yes.
On the, on the poles, utility poles, right?
They have existing regulations.
They have existing regulations. So, so this, this ordinance that's, that's here, is, does it limit them more than, than it exists right now? Right now, can they come in and put their, their stuff on the utility poles?
That's correct.
So without any, without any regula, without any aesthetic concern, without anything...
That's correct.
Okay. So there's a list limits?
Yes.
More than, okay.
It sets, uh, regulations for them to camouflage whatever equipment they put on the pole.
Okay. I'm gonna, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna open the public hearing, since this is a public hearing. Public hearing open. Anyone wish to speak on this item? No?
No.
Public hearing closed?
Thank you.
Any more discussion in reference to this from the table? No?
I make a motion.
I like second already.
Madam Clerk?
I just want, I just want to be, I want to be clear. Um, so, uh, something was mentioned about, uh, um, uh, using, um, foliage or some kind of aesthetic covering for these units on top of the poles? Do we have, are we also requiring that? Are we asking that they do that?
We're asking them to camouflage the equi...
How, how, how so? It, do you know?
Uh, that would be up to them to determine how, uh, best to camouflage without affecting the effectiveness of, of the equipment.
Okay, because, I mean, um, hm, I guess...
We ask the same thing, uh, if you, if you... We ask the same thing if you look at Cooper Park. We have one that's exposed, like the one that's in the back foreground of the one that looks like an antenna with a flagpole. When you, well, when you tell them to camouflage it, the equipment doesn't have to be exposed. It could be like a new pole, like the smaller ones that we have a flagpole of.
Oh, okay, all right. So it'll be a different type of equipment.
That's correct. They may have to replace the pole to achieve that, but that's not our concern.
And they would do it as many times as needed, or...
As many times as they apply for a new cell location.
Okay, all right.
Is there a limit on how many they can put in a block in the city and whatever it is?
I believe it's the, they're limited by the effectiveness of the equipment, the radius of the equipment. You're not going to have one right next to each other, but you will have it within, I would think, within a 500-foot radius.
And I'm sorry, just one more question. And I hate to bring up our neighbors again, but neighbors do a decent job when it comes to aesthetics, and I mean, they care a lot about that. Is ours, how does our ordinance compare to theirs on the hiding, on the hiding portion, the aesthetic part of it?
Like I said, we looked at several ordinances, and the toughest one was the one from the City of Tallahassee, and that's what we mimicked.
You finish? So we may think that their equipment would be like those boxes that the Comcast or AT&amp;T has in the...
No, it's a smaller version of what you see on the tower that we have behind Cooper Park, the backside of Cooper Park, and the one that we have here on 18th and 67, that triangular shape equipment that you see on the pole. That's what the...
How high are those? How high?
Well, the, on the, one at Cooper Park is 120 feet and 100 feet, so it's out of sight. Here, you're talking about a utility pole that's 35-foot.
They're going to transmit from that to the utility poles around the city, or they are going to transmit from this satellite?
From what, the way it works, it's a, it's a, what do you call that on the earth when you're transmitting the signal across?
Triangulate?
They're triangulating within that 35-foot height.
35-foot height, one last answer.
Once, my idea is that once they achieve enough strong signal area for this area, then I believe over time, we will see more companies leaving the existing equipment we have at Cooper Park.
And they do not present to the city any diagram, any...
Yes, they, it's this full set of plans, just like what we have at Cooper Park. But it's for a smaller version of that.
But we don't have any picture here, any drawing here about that. It's going to be a column, 35?
The existing wood utility poles. They're not even changing the poles, they're using the same poles, making them more top-heavy.
Can they be in the backyards of, I mean, I guess, playing...
It could be on any utility pole that FPL or AT&amp;T has out there.
Through the alleys, right?
Alleys, roadways, doesn't matter. They have free access to co-location.
So, Mr. Penna, Madam Manager, as you said, we can foresee that there will be companies exiting or departing from those, that makes sense.
If you put enough antennas, why you have the big ones.
Makes sense. So we need to start looking forward in how we will be replacing that revenue.
And that was going to be my comment, in terms of revenue, is there...
We will lose revenue, that's what I'm saying. We need to start looking forward, planning now as to how we plan to replace that revenue. Right? So we need to start planning now because it's going to happen. It's not a matter of if, it's when. It will happen. So let's start looking forward to that, please.
Yeah, the administration have to do, have to start to work with that. Because we are going to lose the money. And how long, within two years from now?
Two to three years, I would imagine. Two to three years.
Two, three years.
Any more questions from the table?
I just thought of something kind of crazy, but can they make it look like a bird, like a stork?
We will see what they come up with once we pass the ordinance.
Stork? Did you really say stork? You're gonna have to explain that one to me. I never expected to hear stork, but okay. I can go with it.
One of those Everglades.
There we go, okay, okay. An ibis, an ibis, yeah.
You know, I mean, I don't know.
Stork threw me off.
Was a little diaper.
Was it a little diaper?
I see his concern, though. I mean, the soulful towers are ugly, just like little soulful towers in people's backyards.
He said over 500 feet, so it's going to be a grid, and these things are going to be up there every 500 feet. So, you know, just about everywhere you look, at 35, 40 feet, you're going to see some kind of obstruction there. So, I mean, I don't know, maybe if they can make it look at something pleasant to look at.
There's going to be a standard equipment all over the state?
Yes.
Because Tallahassee, I mean, Commissioner, Tallahassee authorized a company to do that at the problem.
The Florida Public Service Commission, correct?
Tallahassee authorized the companies to do that. It's not the county, you know...
Through the Florida.
No, I'm not arguing about that. I'm just arguing about aesthetics.
Yeah, but if it's overly, we have to go to Tallahassee and discuss with them.
Well, perhaps we can work with the company and as far as aesthetics.
Some kind of, some kind of West Miami motif. I mean, I don't know.
Will we have a say-so, Mr. Penna, in that, in the aesthetics? Will we have a say-so as to what we might, will they ask us what we'd like?
They have to meet our ordinance, what's passed.
They have to meet it, so there it is. There it is. They have to meet, they have to meet it. So that's, answers that.
So this will be a discussion for...
Madam Manager?
Let me put it this way. If you do not adopt this ordinance, we're going to have tomorrow what you don't want.
Okay.
No, I make a motion.
So the problem, the issue is that you can tweak it later, you can change it, you can adopt it, whatever.
But the thing is that we already have inquiries from several companies to do Christmas trees on top of telephone poles.
Madam Manager, did you have something to say? Did you have something?
Okay, it's a motion and second.
Well, the manager has something to say. Let's hear what she has to say.
This is just a friendly offer, if you would. I think that the Dade County League of Cities is an excellent venue to try to get all the cities to adopt resolutions saying that this is going to be intrusive and send it on to Tallahassee, to the Florida Public Service Commission, and hopefully somebody will rethink this. Because they're up there making laws that affect cities in this fashion. Number one, it's going to impact us from a revenue side, but I think aesthetically, and it's going to raise other types of questions from the community.
Health-wise.
I mean, have there been studies to see exactly what you said, Commissioner Blanes? Have there been studies that prove that this is not going to, you know, hurt anyone's health from a public safety standpoint, from a hurricane standpoint? I mean, I think we should, as active as the Dade League of Cities is, I think they should take a stance and ask all the cities that are being impacted by this to, you know, maybe ask them to rethink this. Laws are made, but they can be changed.
That can't hurt. We do have a motion on the table, so let's proceed.
Yeah, make a motion to approve because this is a standard thing.
Okay. Madam Clerk? Would you like me to call the vote?
Call the vote, please.
Yes, and we have a motion by Vice Mayor Suarez and second by Commissioner Blanca. On the motion, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Paldron?
In the meantime, yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
5-0, item passes.
Next item, please.
Item 11B. This is a first reading, an ordinance by the City Commission amending the City of West Miami Code of Ordinances to repeal ordinance 10406 to adopt a new flood damage prevention ordinance, to adopt flood hazard maps, to designate a flood plain administrator to adopt procedures and criteria for development in flood hazard areas and for other purposes, providing for applicability, separability, and an effective date by Mayor and City Commission.
Okay, since this is a first reading, I know there is no discussion.
Motion.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Yes, on the motion, Commissioner Diaz-Paldron, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
5-0, item passes. Next item, item 11C, discussion in reference to revision of court enforcement ordinances. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Blanes.
Well, if we really get into the nuts and bolts of this, we'll be here all night and all day tomorrow. So I'm going to say something briefly, and then hopefully Mr. Penna can say something, and then the attorney, and then maybe the manager. But we had a meeting this morning, and we discussed some court enforcement regulations that I think that we need to adjust through inquiry and through suggestions by the attorney and new revelation that has come to the city manager and through Martin Garcia, our court enforcement officer, and Mr. Penna. It would behoove us to be proactive and change some of these regulations. We spoke about commercial vehicles. Campers is a new phenomenon in Dade County. I think in South Miami, they are advertising campers as actually as living quarters. So we need to address that. The water account, when a renter opens up a water account, it's going to be with the permission of the owner, and I think I'll let the attorney touch on that. Garbage cans, you know, to have them definitely put in the back of the house where they cannot be seen, you know, from the front of the house or from, you know, the street or avenue We spoke about, what else did we speak about? We spoke about so many things, I forgot. Fines. We spoke about fines, court enforcement fines. We spoke about the possibility of increasing them and changing the way that we go about mitigating them. And that is something that I believe that we need to do. See what else, Madam Manager, what am I...
We actually touched a little bit on the possibility of revisiting the Airbnb licensing fee.
Increasing the Airbnb fees.
Right.
I thought that would be something that, you know, we should just regulate them, get them out of business, get them out of West Miami. If...
You can't say that, Commissioner. Please.
Hey, I'm a capitalist. I love capitalism. I love making money, but not in our city. Well, I know. I'm just kidding.
Just kidding.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, can you talk about the water account?
I have to settle down first.
I was most impressed with all the work that the attorney has done. I think that, I think we're going to be able to keep track and have more control of renters when they apply for the water account because he is going to involve the property owner.
Right. The owner will be held accountable for, hopefully, for whatever water is used through the tenant.
Through an administrative, what do you call it, Mr. Attorney?
Administrative order.
An administrative order.
Right.
So this is a new buzzword for us, administrative order. Through administrative orders, we can change some things, and this is going to be one of them. Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Give me one second so I can. We also talked about regulating lawn companies, Commissioner Blanes.
That's right. We also talked, the court enforcement officer, Martin Garcia, spoke about our neighbor to the east, Coral Gables, and what they do is there, they regulate the commercial lawn companies. And basically, they have to register. They have to register with us. We give them a decal for their truck and for their trailer. They pay $20 for each one, that's $40 a year. The police department will hopefully help us enforce that. That way, we'll know the company, we'll know if they're insured, we'll know who they are, and we'll have more intelligence and control of who is around. Also, the commercial vehicles, I also suggested that people that have commercial vehicles in the city to also register them with us, and they will also have a decal. And then there were some other things that we discussed about them, but I guess we can, you know, the way they look, and only one per resident. So it's really involved, let me tell you, there's so many things when you start talking about, and then about changing something, and then you have to consider this, and then you have to consider that, and it's very time-consuming. So, but we're on track to make these changes. I recommend that maybe you make time and meet with the attorney or maybe the manager. That way, she can bring you up to speed, and we don't have to spend a lot of time here today.
Thank you for the time that you took, Commissioner, to do this.
Our recommendation would be to tackle maybe two projects at a time so that we can see them through completion and study all the angles of what each proposal represents before we ask Mr. Yellos to prepare an ordinance. So I think being, becoming involved and informed would be our best way to go moving forward. Anytime you would like to come in and meet with us, we'll sit with you, Mr. Penna, myself, the city attorney. We will definitely sit down with you and acquaint you with our conversation with Commissioner Blanes today.
I will do that. Thank you, Madam Manager.
We, Commissioner Blanes asked me to comment on this. Back in 2001, I made a recommendation to the City of West Miami, but there was no action by the City Commission. At that time, I suggested that you should have, at the time, and still we do, whenever a property owner rents a home, it's only the tenant that comes and opens up the water system. In other words, they're the one that contract with us. However, the problem is that we have our reading every three months, and it had been the time that some renters have left, and they have had some sort of argument with the owner, they leave the water open and running, and whenever the end of the year, the end of the three months come, that particular home owes $3,000, $4,000 or more.
In some cases, that, but you, we have been left with bills of $500, $600, $700. That's not unusual. We don't get a credit from Miami-Dade County, so what Mr. Yellos, through an administrative order, has prepared for us is to give us the tools that we need to hold that owner or that company that owns the property accountable for the water that is provided by the city.
In 2001, I quoted case law by the Third District Court of Appeals. It's William Burkey versus City of Miami Beach cited at 568 Southern 2nd 108, in which the City of Miami Beach had leaned a property to an owner whose renter had left the water running, and they was owed hundreds of thousands of dollars, I'm sorry, hundreds of dollars. At that time, there was an appeal to the Third DCA, and the Third DCA, the District Court of Appeal, stated, "Since the city could have protected, for example, by declining to contract directly with the tenant and preserve the lien rights against the owner." In other words, if we have the owner executing the contract between the city and opening the water lines, that would give the city the opportunity of leaning the property if there's a water bill. But there was no action by the City Commission at the time, so what I had suggested to the manager is we already have an ordinance that the administration has the ability to decline contracting with the tenant, and that was passed years ago. So what I have done is I've prepared an administrative order implementing the ordinance that you already passed. So the ordinance I drafted years ago, and it was passed, but it was never implemented because, I don't know why, but it was the decision of the commission not to implement it at the time. So what I had suggested to the manager is we already have an ordinance that the administration So, what I suggest right now is for the owners, whenever they want to rent, that they have to bring out to the city the documents, and that they rented with the rental agreement, and to open up the water on their name, and they will be responsible for anything that happens there. The other thing that I think that is essential is, and this is the initiative of the mayor, an ordinance that I already prepared, that it says, "Ordinance City of West Miami, creating a chapter entitled 'Abandoned Real and Personal Property.'" What that would do is they would make, for instance, when a home is foreclosed, that it places a burden on whoever had foreclosed that home to come and register, paying a fine, a fee, I'm sorry, to the city, and report it every so often, and then they would be responsible for the upkeep, keeping down the court enforcement problems that we have had in the past. So, I have prepared the ordinance, a court enforcement division, petition, register abandoned real property, and also an affidavit of ownership for that real property.
And, Mr. Attorney, I do wanna sit with you before we bring that to the agenda. I wanna sit with you and discuss that before we put it on the agenda. The ordinance you just talked about, it's gonna, we're gonna put it on probably the next agenda.
Okay, but as I said, we wanted to meet to discuss it.
Yes, and we couldn't.
Since it was your idea.
Yes.
And the rest has already been implemented. We had had, in the signed issues, I called the attention to the commission, Mr. Blanes, Commissioner Blanes, that there's a case by the name of Bonita Media Enterprises versus Collier County, which I think that Commissioner Diaz-Padron would be delighted to read, since this is constitutional issue, and it consists of 21 pages, 22 pages, that talks about not only the compliance issue, but the different method of approaching, the unconstitutional aspect of limiting expression, and commercial speech and the like, and so I'm sure that Commissioner Diaz-Padron would be delighted to read it, since he's taken a course on that now.
Can't wait.
Homework. You didn't know you were gonna get homework, did you?
You going to talk now?
No.
Mr. Blanes, I want to wrap around this, because I don't think we should be all night here. If you want to make a difference in the court enforcement, why don't you get a refined city? The ordinance, like Coral Gables, Pine Crest, Golden Beach, refined cities, get the court enforcement they have, and read it, and bring it to Juan Penna, and check.
I did.
You did it?
I did.
And you didn't get the answers?
And something dawned on me while I was reading through them, and what it did, what it dawned on me was that, you know what, we're different. We're a small city with one neighborhood. We don't have two neighborhoods, we don't have three neighborhoods, we got one neighborhood.
And is the difference for the code that?
We mess up the neighborhood, and there goes the city. So, whatever court enforcement laws, rules, regulations that we need to adopt need to be ours, they need to be tailored, fit for us.
Yeah, but what I mean is just...
We get ideas, but we cannot just, you know, copy and...
No, no, I'm sorry, excuse me, I don't mean copy. I mean, get ideas where they have, and then you get the best thing for us.
But...
And that's it, because, you know, Villalobos is going to be 24 days trying to write up something.
Because, once you start, once you start talking about the court enforcement, and the laws, and the rules, and the regulations, and then you start realizing that one thing affects one thing, and then the other thing affects the other, and then the other thing affects the other, and you have to take a lot of things into consideration, and it takes a lot of time. But what we need to do is, we need to tailor make these court enforcement regulations to us, to our needs.
You're working on that, right?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, for me it's okay.
The other thing is that court enforcement is established by state law. So, we cannot go beyond state law into adopting whatever changes that the commission wants to do, and it has to be pursued in accordance with state law. Chapter 166 of Florida statute.
For me, it's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Penna.
Thank you.
I had Mr. Penna fix the clock, it was driving me crazy. I kept looking at the clock, I go, that time is not... Now, I really don't know what I'm looking at.
I think he's sending a message.
Now, I really don't know what I'm looking at. Madam Clerk, you can't do that to me, Mr. Penna. Madam Clerk, I see you have a motion, but we don't need a motion for this, correct? This was just a discussion.
Just your blessing to instruct the city attorney to proceed with the...
So, we just did like an all in favor?
Okay, so, no motion needed?
No, I'm asking you.
No, 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 just...
So, it was just to let us know of the discussion, and...
It's just to listen to him talking.
To revisit the current ordinance?
Do we need an all in favor for the staff to proceed, or no?
You don't need a vote, there was no proposal.
Perfect, perfect, next item, please.
Next item is item 11D, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami in support of the initiatives of U.S. Senators Marco Rubio and Rick Scott in supporting the efforts of Venezuelan interim president Juan Guaido to bring humanitarian aid to the people of Venezuela, and further supporting the initiative of granting temporary protected status to those Venezuelan exiles in the United States. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Diaz-Padron.
Commissioner?
Yeah, this is a quick item. We were all at the event on Friday, I think it was, and I think the resolution's pretty self-explanatory. The whole Florida congressional delegation from South Florida and the U.S. senators are on board with granting TPS to the Venezuelan exiles, and I just wanna lend our community support, so if you join me in that.
Motion, second.
It's Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Padron, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Suarez?
Yes.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes. Next item, item 11E, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami in support of Miami Dade County Public Schools' efforts to modify the district cost differential so that it takes into account differences in integral to educational institutions' operations reflecting such cost to average teacher salaries, health insurance for employees, property insurance for full-time equivalent, housing and transportation costs for full-time equivalent, supporting HB 1031 and SB 1284. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Diaz-Padron.
Commissioner?
Again, hopefully another quick item, the district cost, this is, this stems from a conversation I had in Tallahassee when we were up there with the public schools. The district cost differential is a key component in how the schools are funded down here. Since 2004, they've lost almost a billion dollars in funding due to the modifications they made back then. House Bill 1034, which is sponsored by Lupus, Representative Lupus is going through committee right now, and the companion Senate Bill, Manny Dees Jr., sponsoring it, and I just wanna lend our support to those efforts.
I have a question, this was presented by the school board, right?
This was...
By Miami Dade School Board?
This is one of their legislative priorities.
And they want, this have to do something with the charter school?
No.
Try to equalize the average of the salary?
No, all this is, is, we, in South Florida, we get less money.
Yeah, that was changed years ago.
Yeah, right, so, all this is, is supporting their efforts in Tallahassee, the public schools' efforts, to change the formula so that we get funded more.
Yeah, but this about salaries and insurance, this have nothing to do with the charter school and public school?
No.
All right, I make a motion.
Second.
With one amendment, there was on, on the fifth whereas, there was a...
Typographical error.
Right.
It should read, the whereas, the city, Miami Dade County Public Schools, the public schools was left out, so it has to be inserted there, Madam Clerk.
So, with that amendment?
So, it should read, Miami Dade County Public Schools is one of the lowest recipients of funding for the state of Florida.
Thank you.
Well, Diaz said it's public school.
Correct for the record. And we have a motion by Commissioner, Vice Mayor Suarez, second by Commissioner Blanca. Would you like me to call the vote, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Diaz-Padron, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor...
Yes.
Suarez, how do you vote? Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Item 11F, request to cancel the April 3, 2019 regular commission meeting by Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On that date, April 3, both our Vice Mayor and myself will be out of town. Vice Mayor is attending the Dade Day Celebration, and I will be out on a personal matter, so...
Is he going to Tallahassee?
Dade Days, yes, yes, ma'am.
But, so, we went to Tallahassee for that, and so...
We did, but I'm sure Commissioner Suarez will be, continue to advocate, advocate for our, for our needs, and then perhaps be able to report back to us all that he was able to accomplish while he was there. So, both, with that said, we'll both, both of us will not be here, so I'm thinking to cancel that meeting, and if something comes up of importance or an emergency, that we'll be able to call a special meeting. Thoughts, comments, questions?
That's fine.
Yes?
Yes.
If there's nothing really, really important pending...
Right, and as of this time, there isn't, if something comes up, we will, I'll be able to call a special meeting for the time that we will both be here.
Okay.
Is any opposition? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Do you need a...
Meeting canceled.
Meeting canceled.
Yes, next item is item 11G, discussion regarding a possible Halloween haunted house, lash carnival as part of the city's special events by Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes, and Commissioner Blanes, I wanna actually bring you in on this. You know how I am about the kids and family events, and, you know, we have our annual Lighting of the Tree, our annual Easter egg hunt, and our Fourth of July. I'd like to start towards other annual events, and I was thinking, we used to have, we did once a haunted house and a carnival at the rec many, many years ago, because I remember I was part of, we helped build it, and I'm seeing a lot of young families move into our city, young children, and I'm seeing most of them leave our city come Halloween to go other places. So, I'd like to start another tradition of another annual event. I'm thinking maybe start with maybe just a carnival, something, something so that the young families with children know that they can have something to come to, a safe environment to enjoy Halloween. And I'm possibly looking at doing something at the rec. I talked to John Michael a while back, and he thought it was a good idea, so maybe if we could put our thoughts together, I think he caps on, and discuss what we'd like to do, but I'd like to start celebrating some type of Halloween event here for the, for the children.
Okay.
So, any thoughts, comments? Mr. Blanes, I know that's, the park is your committee, so what are your thoughts?
I think if we do, we should start small.
Right, and most definitely.
Maybe have some kinda...
Carnival, I was thinking maybe a little carnival or something.
Have stations throughout the rec, you know, where the little children...
Correct.
Maybe, you know, from four to 10 years old, can, or maybe less, eight, and they can go from one station to the next, and have raffles, and have contests, and have some kinda interaction, you know, so they can be in a safe monitored area.
Yes.
Putting together a haunted house, it's a challenge.
Just a thought, doesn't have to be this, you know, coming year, like I said, I agree with you, starting small.
So, if we start small, and then, you know...
Gauge the interest.
Yeah, and then we'll take it from there.
I'm just seeing, when I go out with the grandkids on Halloween, you know, a lot of houses are, there's no lights on, because they've left, they've gone to another city to celebrate.
Demographically, you are absolutely correct.
We have a lot of young children, young families moving in, so I'd like to let them know that there's something that they can stay here in their city, in a safe environment, and, you know, enjoy, enjoy Halloween, maybe do a, like we do for the rec, maybe like a costume contest, something like that. So, I agree with starting small, but I just wanna, want to get your buy-in that I'd like to start working towards this. Yes?
I have a question.
Yes.
Your idea is, because now every year, less children walk in the streets.
Yes, and more, more houses have no lights on because the families are leaving to go elsewhere.
Your idea is to use one of our parks or recreation centers?
Something on...
To do something in someplace?
Yes.
That the parents take the childrens, and the childrens enjoy in there?
Yes.
And they have a good time there?
Yes.
And they don't have to be walking the street, and if they go, if they don't go, so they have a place to go.
Yes, and they can still walk the streets, and hopefully, you know, but yes, someplace we can come together as a community.
Your idea is to make a main festival, like you said...
Yes, like we do for Easter and...
Haunted house carnival.
Well, I did, that was just to put something on the agenda.
Make something in one place?
Yes.
That's what your idea is?
Yes.
So, the people will be there?
Yes.
The police will be there taking care of...
Yes, just like our other events, just like Easter and Fourth of July, and Lighting of the Tree.
Well, I think today, because the problem we have, the people doesn't like to go out, I think it's a good idea if we go over the parks?
Good.
And put the children there?
Yes.
And then the police take care of it, taking care of the people, and the people doesn't be afraid to go there with the children?
Correct.
I like the idea.
Well, I'm very happy that you all like the idea, and now we can start working, you know, give the staff the go-ahead to start, you know, talking about it and planning it.
Especially today, the people are afraid to go out.
Yes, and I welcome your ideas, I mean, talk to staff and give them...
So, at least we give a place in...
Correct.
With a peaceful festival, with a peaceful carnival, wherever you want to go.
Another way to give back to our, to our community, to the residents, because we do have a lot of young families moving in, so please, meet with staff and share your ideas so that we can start planning this.
Yeah, and like I said, we should start small.
I agree.
And only for little children, you know?
Well, that might be difficult, but we'll discuss, I mean, discuss it with staff, and we'll take it, I'm happy you agree and you like the idea, so...
I don't expect to have you there.
No.
You gotta just put a small ticket...
You know, with the devil, with the devil.
I will be dressed up as a devil.
Okay, okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, item 11H, this is a discussion in reference to mayor, dash, city commission office, offices. This item is sponsored by Mayor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm gonna start by saying that, now that I have an office, Commissioner Blanes, Commissioner Blanca, and I know Commissioner Vasquez, at some point in time, you all gave up your offices?
I, yes, I did.
For, for the greater good, I mean, the staff that's here all day, every day needed the space, so I believe yours became part of the lobby?
Right.
For passports. Commissioner Blanes and Commissioner Vasquez gave up theirs for the big conference room that everybody uses. So, what I, what I am proposing is that the mayor's office now becomes the mayor commission office. I want to share that with each and every one of you. You're welcome to put your pictures, your oaths of office on the walls, and what, upon your approval, I would like the city manager to take out the desk and give the desk to one of the girls in the front office, who, I mean, the desk can be better served by someone who's gonna use it all day, every day, and then put a conference table in there for us all to use, and then put like a five drawer locking cabinet, so we each have a personal, private space if you have to lock something, and then put all our, the charter, all our budgets, like a resource, you know, resource library for our use, so that you can, it's there to use.
Sunshine law-free zone.
Not to go, no, not to meet, not for, no, 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 don't put words in my mouth, we will not be in there together.
Mr. Attorney, can we...
Not together.
Can we pass a resolution and an order?
Commissioner.
Where we make that office sunshine free zone?
No, 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 I am not saying that, let me put it on the record, that is, those are not my words. Commissioner, this is, if you have to meet...
We can do that, right?
If you have to meet...
It's too late, too.
That's a criminal first degree, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, sir, thank you.
You can go to jail for one year.
Thank you.
Okay, I take that back.
Commissioner Diaz-Padron, if you have to meet with a resident, I'd like for you to have a space, it's there for us all to use, obviously, not together, one at a time, if you need to go in there and take your tablet and check your emails. I just want to open up the office to not only the mayor, but it is now going to be the mayor commission office.
By the way, in Tallahassee, the way that it works in the legislature is that they have a bubble... By the way, in Tallahassee, the, uh, way that it works in the legislature is that they have a bubble. And the bubble comes down, uh, like Mr. Smart. And the legislature can meet and discuss whatever they want out of sunshine because they're exempt.
But we're not.
You're not.
Correct. So we will not be meeting there together at the same time. It is for one at a time, whenever you need it.
Thank you.
So, and, I mean, feel free. I'd love to put all our pictures on the walls and whatever you wanna put on your wall. It's now, it is now the mayor commission office. So, Madam Manager, um, are you go, is everyone okay with, uh, a cabinet, five drawers, so everyone, if you have something you wanna lock? I mean, that way you have a different...
Excuse me. You cannot have public records locked.
No, no.
Whatever you have here...
Personal stuff. No? So no? Okay, so scratch that then.
I counsel against it.
Okay, then, then scratch that. No. Scratch. It was just a thought, an idea.
We leave it open, so anyone can see it.
So at least maybe a drawer with, you know, a name, like we have our, our mailbox.
Sure.
So you can put your, you know, whatever personal stuff you have in there.
We'll start looking at a, like a, maybe, uh, a nice size conference table that would fit in there with three, four, or five chairs, uh, something that would be suitable for you all to meet with your constituents or anyone to come to the city.
Pinball machine, maybe. I'll spend some more time...
We can bring, bring like a golf, one of those golf putt- I have one at home, the golf putting thing, yes. We can put stuff like, stuff like that, right, Mr. Attorney?
I'm sorry.
We could personal things like a little golf putting green?
Oh, yes, you could do that.
Okay, perfect. So whatever you have at home for, for entertainment purposes, you may put into the office for us all to use.
Rubik's Cube.
Okay, so, thank you.
Rubik's Cube.
Thank you all for, thank you all for that. Um, I, I'm, I'm very happy you like that idea as well. So, next item, good of the order.
Next item is item 12, it's a good of the order.
Oh, wait, we're not done. Yes, sir.
I want to make a, I want to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
I want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Juan Penna, because today is March 20th. And that clock, since January 1st, until 20 minutes ago, was with all time. So congratulations, because I was watching the time, the hour to call now, and, and this good of the order called you for that, what you did before. So thank you.
Great idea, Mr. Penn. I'm glad you took care of that.
Oh, then, maybe you did it?
It was driving me crazy.
Well, because, of course.
Yes, I kept looking up there, and I, I had to figure out what time it was. So, yes. You're, you're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, anyone for anything good of the order?
Good night.
No, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Nine, eight, two, three, Juan, it's time out.
Mayor, you know...